And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On September 11th, 2001, the United States of America was attacked. And we lost thousands of civilians, military personnel, and public safety officials. Let's just take a moment to remember those that we lost on that day. Lord, we pray with joy and thankfulness for your mercy to us as we begin our earthly work. Amen.
City Kirk Certified Publication Daily Record on September 9th, North River Free Council Regular City Council Meeting, September 13th, 2011. I currently copy the Open Meetings Act is posting a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or a pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Mr. Clark, first item.
Resolutions, right, tax levies, item number five, resolution that pursuant to revised state statutes, the transit authority of the City of Omaha Board certifies the city council of the City of Omaha, one half of their total tax rate for the year 2012, 4.933 cents.
Public hearing on item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Proportional.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number six, resolution that pursuant to Nebraska revised statutes, the current property tax request for 2012 be different amount than the property tax request of 2011. That the actual valuation upon all taxable property within the limits of the City of Omaha for the year 2012, with a purpose as follows, 49.922 cents for the City of Omaha's 2012 budget, including 28.447 cents for general funds, 19.28 cents for principal and interest on indebtedness, 0.6 cents for the satisfaction or judgment of litigation expenses, 1.594 cents for redevelopment fund, and...
Public hearing on item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Second, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Colonel Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number seven is ordinance on final reading, ordinance authorizing and directing the issue of general obligation bonds and the issuing of general obligation refunding bonds. There are City of Omaha, 23 million 950,000 to be turned for identification purpose of various purpose bonds, series 2011 A, and general obligation refunding bond, series 2011 B. We have amendment of the whole.
Public hearing was held on August 30th. We have a motion. Having a motion to move the amendment. Roll call.
This is the amendment of the whole. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items eight through nine shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Item number 10 is a plot dedication of the east 9th feet of Lot 2, Corrigan's OPS addition located northwest of 42nd and Y Streets, A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 11, shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 12, Grover Inn, 3505 South 42nd Street, Class C liquor license application, no location, you have an amendment, and note your reports since this is laid over.
Public hearing on item number 12 was continued today. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific hearing here with Sherry Queen, the applicant. I, first of all, like to deliver to you a document that we got from her minister. As the application states, this is an application to take over the Grover Inn on 42nd and Grover, which is a small neighborhood operation, restaurant type. I think the issue here is that Sherry has some things on her record that are fairly recent that need to be addressed, basically some shoplifting issues. She has taken some faith-based treatment for that. In addition to that, I have already enrolled her with a coun- certified counselor, and that treatment begins the 17th. She's going to do a six-week outpatient treatment for that. That shoplifting thing is really a compulsive disorder. This was nothing of- this wasn't theft in the true sense of the word because she was stealing things that were of nominal value, things she had money in her pocket to pay for. But it is an issue, she has addressed it. She has successfully operated, I think, three places in Omaha in the past 12 or 13 years. I think they had one violation, which was a compliance check failure. They did 10 days for that. And so I think that she and her husband, Bill, are fit and proper people to run this operation, and without- with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you, Sherry. I do have a couple of questions for you. And I appreciate what you said and that you're going through counseling and that you recognize that there's a problem there. But just tell the council, you know, you're, as a liquor manager, you need to make sure they follow all the rules and regulations of the law. And so can you just tell us what management skills you think you have that you will ensure your business will conform to the law?
Give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sherry Queen, and we live on 15215 Seward Plaza. I've always followed the law, I mean, I've always followed every ounce of the law. That was, I don't know what happened, why I was going through that little period.
But how about liquor? Can you make sure the liquor rules are followed?
Absolutely. I mean, of course, yes.
Well, you know, I mean, prior convictions and arrests can be used as evidence for your qualifications, whether they are related to liquor or not, but we just want to make sure that you can tell us that you will make sure, as the liquor manager, because that's very important, the liquor manager, that the rules and regulations of the law will be followed, and you'll assure us that they will be followed.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you have taken already a certified alcohol server training program?
I've got, yes.
Okay.
Right after we had to close for 10 days at the time, and then we went to the, to a sheriff's place and took the class, and then we reopened at that time.
Okay. And how long were you with the previous business? That was open for how long?
The last one altogether was about eight years, but we had left and went somewhere else in between for, to the Hillside Pub.
And you were the liquor manager?
I've always been a liquor manager for 12 years.
So you've had that 12 years experience then?
Yes.
Okay. And have you yourself ever had a cell to a minor?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
The amendment. Most approve the amendment.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. The amendment is approved, 501 passing.
Thank you so much.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted as amended, 501 passing.
Mr. President, if I could take a moment of privilege here. Sherry, I need you to get well, okay?
I will.
I, one of my degrees is in psychotherapy, and I know that you need to get well.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 13 is Noodles &amp; Company, number 7104, Class I liquor license at 12414 L Street, a new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, members of the council, my name is Frederick Stellic. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Gross and Welch in Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Nebraska Dining LLC, doing business as Noodles &amp; Company. This is their second location in Omaha. They have one on South 72nd Street. They have two in Lincoln and several in the state of Missouri. This particular organization, I think, has 11 altogether. Although the alcohol is a very minor part of their business, they feel that as a business decision, it's necessary in order to compete with the other restaurants of similar type. They've had absolutely no problems with their location here on 72nd Street, none in Lincoln. They have a very extensive training program for their managers. They pride themselves on not having any issues.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 14 is the Hy-Vee, number eight, at 747 North 132nd Street, catering liquor license, no application, no location, and currently hold a Class C license.
Public hearing on item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. John Johnson, 1323 North 132nd. I'm the store director at Hy-Vee, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 16 is an amendment request from the Nebraska Law Control Commission that Crew Park, 6205 Maple Street, the application be amended to include a beer garden.
Public hearing on item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Jonathan Tverdic, 5427 Spring Street. I'm acting as behalf of, as representation of myself and my other partners in the business.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
We do approve. Second.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick question. This was an application we approved just a couple of weeks ago for a great renovation in Benson, and this was an oversight in the application, I believe, not including the beer garden, which was intended along the way, so I'm fully supportive, but just wanted to ask you one question. We have received a letter about noise concerns, but it's accurate to say the back beer garden won't have any music behind that outdoors, right?
Absolutely not.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And grand openings when?
We had our soft opening on Saturday, and so grand opening will be October 1st.
Great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
For the record, public hearing is closed. No further lights. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. We'll take items 17, 18, 19 together. They're all Kino. 17 is resolution to authorize Big Red to have a satellite Kino location at Kirk &amp; Clive's at 2202 South 13th Street. 18 is the bottomless glass bar and grill at 17520 Wright Street, and 19 is the wet lounge at 1021 South 178th Street.
Public hearing on items 17 through 19 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located 11248 John vault Boulevard. I have with me the three owners of each of the establishments here, and these are all ownership changes. All three establishments already have Kino. They're just changing owners. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council and may be following the consent agenda in the order in which they remove, as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 20 through 24 were held on August 30th. Do we have a motion? Second, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council and may be following the consent agenda in the order in which they remove, as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 20 through 24 were held on August 30th. Do we have a motion? Second, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. And we have a request to take out agenda item number 32.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 25 through 31 and 33 through 45 begin now. Are there any proponents? 25 through 31 or 33 through 45? Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed.
We approve. Second.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted six to zero. Item number 32, resolution speed limit be changed and/or established as follows, Pacific Street from 204th to 211th Street, 35 miles per hour.
Public hearing on item number 32 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'll be brief my comments. My name is Steve Baker, B-A-K-E-R. I'm the superintendent of schools for the Elkhorn Public School District. The district office address is 20650 Glen Street. I'd like to begin by thanking Public Works Director, Mr. Stube, and the mayor for proposing the speed limit reduction along Pacific Street between 204th and 211th. As you're likely aware, over the past two years, the Elkhorn Public School District has opened three new schools, and we return the voters this fall for a new bond issue for three more schools. Our school district has doubled in size during the past 10 years. We're adding approximately 1,000 students every three years. That represents an increase to student enrollment of 7% per year over the past 10 years. Elkhorn Valley View Middle School opened this fall with over 400 students. The ideal capacity for this facility is 600, but I anticipate it will reach that number very quickly. The school site was purchased from the Meek Farm Trust in 2005, and the school was included in the 2006 bond issue. The slowdown in the economy has placed on hold the development immediately around the school, but it certainly has not stopped development along the Pacific corridor. I believe most realtors would tell any of us that the most active residential development area in the metro is that corridor along there. The reduction of the speed limit along Pacific to 35 miles per hour is certainly a step in the right direction and is very much appreciated. We want our students in Elkhorn to receive the very best possible education that they can, but more important than that, and I know we all share a common goal, is to provide the safest environment, whether that's in the school or on the way to and from school on a daily basis. Because of some unique characteristics in this neighborhood, I initiated a meeting with the newly appointed city engineer, Todd Fitzher, and Todd and I first met on or about May 26. The primary purpose of this meeting was to discuss the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Pacific and 208th, which serves as the entrance to the Elkhorn Valley View Middle School site. In fact, the offer was made on behalf of the school district that the school district would pay for the cost of the signal. The school district was not requesting the city fund the expense. I was informed at that time that a traffic signal was not warranted, even if the district funded the entire expense. While I do not pretend to have the expertise of conducting traffic studies, I do understand a little bit about the state and federal requirements that need to be met to warn a signal, and more important, I understand student safety. I believe that every one of us has been in an intersection at some point in our lives where we wondered why there was or was not a traffic signal. In fact, I can name three of them off the top of my head on Highway 31 that have left turn lanes and no turn signals that I wonder why not. I'm not here to criticize anyone, and certainly school officials have not led a campaign to have patrons call city officials. In fact, both my interactions with Mr. Fitzher and our staff's communications with the Omaha Police Department and the Douglas County Sheriff's Department have been fantastic. However, after appearing on three newscasts regarding this matter, I know that the city engineer's office has received many phone calls along with the mayor's office. I'm here looking for a solution and wanting to make sure that as a city council, you understand that the school district believes either a full traffic signal or a signal pedestrian crossing would improve the safety for our students. Please let me close with this. I say that I'm not an expert in this matter, but this is not our first experience opening a new school. Since 2000, the district has opened seven new schools. In 2000 and 2003, we worked directly with the Douglas County engineer, and the county installed pedestrian crossings to accommodate a safer student crossing to Spring Ridge Elementary School and Elkhorn Ridge Middle School along 180th Street. The district did not pay for those signals, and the period to install them was only a matter of months. We went to the county with the need. The county analyzed the situation and provided the solution. Lastly, I went to the city with the need and offered on behalf of the school district and offered to fund a traffic signal at this intersection. I want to thank you for considering the drop in the speed limit along the stretch to 35 miles an hour. That would help, but it does not completely solve the problem of student safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mrs. Stothard.
Thank you. Dr. Baker, I'll get with you in a minute. I first wanted to have the engineer, street engineer, Todd Fitzher come down. And I will say, you know, I have received quite a few phone calls on this issue, and first and foremost, we want to keep our community safe and absolutely want to keep the kids safe, and so I do think it's our duty to respond to the parents and tell them that what we have done, I want to make sure that the parents out there in the Elkhorn community and Dr. Baker realize that we didn't just push this issue aside, but we really have looked at it numerous times and examined it, and I want Mr. Fitzher to go through and tell what you've done as far, or first of all, tell how you determine if it is warranted, and then if you could tell the council what you've done out there, what you found out. I think it would be important to get that on record.
Okay. Todd Fitzher, Public Works, 1819 Farnham. When I met with Mr. Baker in May, I pretty much knew just based on the background volumes of the roadway that the warrant would not be met, but we went ahead and conducted a warrant investigation, and we did find out that the warrants weren't met. In fact, for comparison's sake, there's a signal that's been proposed for the high school out on State Highway 31, which is just to the east of this site. That warrant's not even met, so to get some idea for the traffic volumes that require, are required for a signal to be warranted, that one's not even online yet, and that's a state highway, and we all know it carries a lot more traffic than does Pacific Street. But we looked at all the warrants. They were not met. We were out there the first week of school. I personally was out there twice. I know our traffic engineer was out there two or three ti- excuse me, two or three times. We met with the principal. We observed traffic. That's when the decision was made to propose this lowered speed limit, and we immediately put a fourth crosswalk marking in. The intersection had three of the four legs that were marked with a crosswalk. We added a fourth because we recognized that as being a deficiency. Some students were having to cross three legs of the intersection instead of one. We also immediately implemented the lowered school speed limit signs based on site observations and wanting to see how the traffic was going to work before we did a knee-jerk reaction and did something that might have to be undone.
Can you, excuse me, can you, can you tell us what those numbers are? I mean, what, what numbers as far as traffic goes would warrant a light, and what did you find out out there?
Well, there's eight different warrants that are set forth to warrant a traffic signal, so it's, and it's based on side street and main street volume, so it's kind of difficult to kind of cover all that. There's charts and different things that are involved, but just to give you some comparison, I know that the signal for the new Methodist Women's Hospital has been brought up as a comparison. That was completed when the hospital opened. HDR did a study. That signal was found to be warranted, and just to give you a comparison on those two streets, and I've got, I've got most recent counts that just came out here. They were both conducted in 2010. The 192nd Street corridor in front of the Methodist Hospital carries 10,450 cars in our last count that was done. Pacific Street in front of the school carries about 4,800, so it's, it's less than half of the volumes. But what it takes for pedestrian indoor signal warrant to be met is a significant amount of traffic on the main street such that side street traffic cannot safely access that main road without a traffic signal device. And to give you, I mean, if the, if the east-west street is carrying 1,200 vehicles per hour, that's where that line maxes out. The side street still has to carry in excess of 100 vehicles per hour to trip that warrant, and that does not include right turns. So there'd have to be 100 vehicles from the side street, in this case, the school driveway or the street opposing that, that would have to exceed 100 vehicles per hour, and that is if Pacific Street was maxed out at 1,200 per hour, and it's at about 450. So it's really not even close, and it's important, it's very important to note that if the city puts a traffic signal in that is not warranted, there are liabilities, issues associated with installing a traffic control device that does not meet these federal standards. This MUTCD is a federal document. If we put a signal in, eventually there will be an accident. There's probably been an accident at every signalized intersection in Omaha at some point in time. One of the first things that gets looked at if somebody's injured or worse at a signalized intersection is, why was this intersection signalized? Is the appropriate traffic control device in place? If we comply with the federal standards, we get to check that box and our liability is essentially over. If we have an unwarranted signal device or traffic control device or a non-compliant traffic control device, whether it be a four-way stop where it's not warranted, a stop sign to try to control speed, a signal that's unwarranted, we can be liable for the injury of that person because we installed a non-conforming device. And that is why there's bagged signals or dark signals out on the highway. They were installed in anticipation of development that has not happened yet because of the economy and the state will not allow those signals to be turned on because they're not warranted yet and the state doesn't want to be exposed to that liability, much like I don't either as a representative for the city. So that is what we've looked at with regard to that traffic signal.
Now, Dr. Baker mentioned that the school district was willing to pay for the light in anticipation that there might be more traffic out there in the near future. Can you speak to that? Because I know you told me a bit about that, that as that traffic increases out there that in the long range plans that Pacific Street is going to be widened. And there, the other issue are there are no sidewalks out there, but when it is widened, the sidewalks will be put in.
Okay.
And then talk about, well, then would the street light be put in if warranted then?
If warranted. Let me address those two separate issues in that question.
Let me back up because the one thing I'm just concerned about is if, if they would go ahead and put a stoplight in in anticipation, it could be that, that stoplight might get torn out and I'd hate for the district to pay for something that never gets used.
First of all, we don't allow traffic control devices to go in in anticipation of projected volumes. If we widen a roadway and we do a 20-year projection and we say, okay, once we widen this roadway, these volumes are going to be such that the warrants will be met, then we will include that device in the design. And sometimes we even put in a target date. 132nd and Erskine is a great example of that. When we widened 132nd Street recently, the neighbors were very, very supportive of a signal at that location because it's difficult to get out in the morning. The warrants are not quite met. They're very close, but they weren't quite met. In anticipation of that signal going in, we put in the signal bases, we put in all the conduit, we put in everything for the signal so that when it's met, we can go out and put the mast arms up and turn a signal on. But there's still not a signal out there today because it's not warranted. And we do not want that exposure of that device being in place before it's warranted. On this particular corridor, we don't have anything in our five-year plan to widen Pacific Street in this area. We do anticipate that someday it may be widened to provide it being a more urban section rather than the rural section that it is. The rural section out there is what complicates this issue so greatly. When I say a rural section, I'm talking about just a, a piece of roadway that is drains into ditches, open ditches and down into open culverts and into a creek. When we improve that to an urban section, we flatten that, that roadway out, we put curbs and gutters, we channelize the water into underground sewers. On the backs of those curbs, there are sidewalks. And that's one of two ways that we get sidewalks built on our city streets is either through a roadway widening project like we're undertaking currently with 144th Street. We did 132nd last year. Or if development comes along, if a large retailer or a subdivision or somebody like that comes in, part of their requirements, when they improve that ground and they go through the plat process and all that, is to put sidewalks in. We looked at that in some detail when the school went in and we all kind of agreed, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Baker, I'll let him do that, but I think we all agreed that to build sidewalks out there today that essentially go to nowhere and at a substantial cost, a much higher cost than they would be, than it would take to construct them when the roadway was improved to an urban section really didn't make a lot of sense. And when I say they go to nowhere, I want to clarify that. If we built sidewalks today that went up to 204th Street, up to the state highway, if you look at an aerial photograph, there's no sidewalks once you get there, not east, west, I'm sorry, not east, north or south. So if we walked kids up to that corner, first of all, that signal is not set up for pedestrians. There's no push buttons, there's no signal heads for pedestrians, there's no ramps, there's none of that stuff in place. So they would get up there and they would have no way to safely cross the highway. And even if they did cross the highway, they'd have nowhere to go on a sidewalk once they got there. So building sidewalks up to 204th Street accomplishes very little. I do have an aerial, if you, if you'd like to look at ways that we could accomplish possibly moving children into the neighborhood in a safer manner, there's, there's a couple of things that we are looking at and working with Mr. Baker on and along with some of the parents. Those are all the things that have been looked at to date.
I guess we'll just have to go back to the question. Of course, you can't put a price tag on a, on a human life and we certainly want to keep all citizens and the students safe out there. So you yourself have a middle school child in Millard and have experienced what it's like taking your child to school and picking up again. Do you have any suggestions? If we, if the light, you are saying the light is not warranted. We still have kids crossing Pacific Street coming from Skyline Ranches. Any suggestions?
Well, those are some of the things that we've talked to the school about and I'd like to reiterate when we get a chance to sit down with the principal and Mr. Baker and talk about parents and/or staff helping the children cross the street. We do have a couple of ideas on a connection to the neighborhood to the north and east, which is the only children that I've observed walking up and down Pacific are those that are trying to access that next drive, which I believe is Suri Road to the east. They're trying to access that into the neighborhood. If we could provide a connection to that road, that should eliminate any children walking up and down Pacific Street. As far as crossing Pacific Street, we have lowered the speed limit, the permanent speed limit from 45 to 35. That's what's in front of you today. We have school speed limits out there to lower it to 25 miles an hour. We have done studies and look, there are no sight distance concerns. People are not coming over the hill from the west so fast that they can't get stopped. That is not the case. And they can cross safely based on the gap study that we looked at. None of the warrants for a signal are met. The gap study based on the MUTCD indicates that there are adequate gaps. It does go on to suggest other measures such as school speed limit zones, crossing guards and those types of things. So those are the types of things we like to work with the school on.
Do you have that aerial?
I do.
And I just, because I just wanted to ask you, I just wanted you to point out the intersection we're talking about and then if you could point out, you said you have an idea about east and west of that intersection of that you could do something that...
Could you give them the microphone, please? Thank you.
This is the school.
Move, move your paper up, up a little. There you go.
This is the school on the bottom side of the page. Primarily, the children are crossing directly north across Pacific Street to access the neighborhood to the north. The issue is with some of the children, you look at this aerial, there's no connection from this road to this portion of the neighborhood to the northeast. If there were a way either via a sidewalk along Pacific Street on the north side or via a connection between these two residential lots, this is an existing horse trail through here. If we could do a shared access easement, provide a sidewalk through here so the children could walk down here, they wouldn't have to walk on Pacific Street anymore. That sidewalk, that little piece of sidewalk there, we've estimated to cost in excess of $200,000 because of the rural section of the road, because it would require an extension to the existing box culvert. It's just not a flat place. We can't just go out there and pour concrete. There's going to be a substantial amount of dirtwork and extension to that culvert required. So that's one of the reasons we've looked into the ability to use those horse trails to provide a sidewalk connection through there. And then everybody could cross, all the students could cross directly across Pacific Street. There's signs, sidewalks and lowered speed limits at that intersection to provide that crossing.
And did you say there was one to the west too that you were talking about that?
We have not. Once, once students cross north across here, they, they really have access to all of the existing neighborhoods. The only other area is this Ranchview area down here to the west and there's, there's a, like a dozen houses down there. So we have not looked at a connection to the west until the roadway is widened.
I'll ask Dr. Baker to, if you can come back and give, give me your thoughts.
But could I just, if I could respond to something right away, Ranchview Estates is not a dozen houses. There's far more than a dozen houses in there. And if, if you were to continue farther to the west, as you get down to Skyline Drive, there's Rogers Ridge. I would guess that you may have 200 or more houses on the south side of Pacific going to the west. So.
Going to the west?
Going, going to the west.
Okay. Okay.
Ranchview, there's a lot of houses in Ranchview Estates. And there's even more in Rogers Ridge, which is down the Highway 31. Councilwoman, I, I want to answer your question, but I was taking some notes. I, this doesn't have anything to do with its intersection, but Mr. Fitzher mentioned something about doing a traffic study on Highway 31 at Elkhorn South High School, which would be Blue Sage Parkway. I'm not aware of the city doing anything there, but I can tell you as we're, as we're in this chamber right now, the state of Nebraska is doing a traffic study at that intersection today. So I didn't know if the city did anything. I haven't talked to the city about that intersection because it's not the city's jurisdiction. What questions do you have?
Well, I, I think Mr. Fitzher at least made it clear about the warrants for a traffic signal there and I'm sure you understand that. But again, you have to answer to your parents and you have to assure your kids are safe. If it doesn't warrant a stoplight there, do you think the suggestions that were made are adequate in that it's, you could work with Mr. Fitzher and, and working with the, the connector that he talked about over the trails?
Definitely we can work. Todd's been great. I mean, this isn't a personality thing. We can work with anybody on this thing here. I'm not convinced that the pedestrian crossing would not meet the warrants. And I base that upon, not my expertise, but I was talking to one of our engineers the other day. And it's a, it's different set of requirements to put a pedestrian crossing. I'd certainly like that to be looked at. You know, please understand that when, when I met in May, I was told no and there was no traffic study that was done. Now, you can probably sit there and eyeball if you have that expertise, but I was told no before there's ever a traffic study done. I would like the pedestrian crossing looked at. You see all those houses up there, that's Chapel Hill. Skyline Drive is just a small part of this. There, there are hundreds of people that live there. I think if parents felt like there was a safe way of getting those children to school, they would encourage more bike riding. I know one of the parents who is, has been actively calling Mr. Fitzher and talking to him, lives up in the far part of the ranches and, you know, if I lived up there, my child would be dropped off in a car. I wouldn't let him walk to school because I, I would be concerned with that safety. That doesn't mean they don't want them to get there. So I think anything we can do. These are your students too. They're not just our students. And, and that's what we're here to talk about, is student safety. The sidewalk is, is a possibility, but wow, there's a lot of people to the, to the west of there.
Let's keep in mind, folks, that we're here, what's before us is a speed limit of dropping it from 45 to 35.
And we're falling for it.
Okay. I think we're getting, we're getting off track here a little bit, so let's, let's get back to what we're, what's before us.
Well, I think it, we're lowering it because of the issue that we're talking about now. So it, it was a good opportunity to come here and, and let Mr. Fitzher and Dr. Baker talk about why, why they're supporting that speed limit to go down, but also to talk about, you know, the other problems out there. But I appreciate you being here. Thank you. Mr. Fitzher, can I ask you one more question? The, the pedestrian walk?
We looked at all of the warrants and I would be happy if Mr. Baker, he's mentioned meeting with his consultant. His consultant was out there the day we met in May and I looked and said, if you want to do a warrant study, we'll be happy to review it. And I'm quoting from my memory, but he looked at Mr. Baker and said, we can, but I can tell you it's not, it's not met either. We have done pedestrian warrant studies for the crossing. We've done all the signal warrant studies. We even went out and did a gap study. So we've done everything. I've got that information in front of me. I'd be happy to give it to Mr. Baker. He can either have his consultant review it. If his consultant would like to do their own study and provide it to us, I will be happy to review that. And to clarify, the city did not do any study for the, for the high school. I was not trying to indicate that we had done a study.
That was the state.
What I was indicating was that the state was not allowing that signal in yet.
Okay. All right. Well, as our president just reminded us, today we're voting on the, reducing the, the speed limit, but I, I think this conversation at least has to, to continue. And Dr. Baker, I'll be happy to, to go out there and Mr. Fitzher too and, and we could continue the conversation. But I appreciate all your input. Thank you.
And I don't, and I agree fully that the dialogue should continue.
I just had a quick question. I guess I don't have my light on. That's why you don't have...
Dr. T.
Thank you. Todd Fitzher, real quick.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
Is the, is the city not doing the over, the overwalk, the walkover things anymore?
That's a great question and I have a really good answer because I've been asked that question so many times. When the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed, it required grades to reach those overpasses so that wheelchair-bound people could have access to them. What that created as you drive around Omaha was the long ramps, either the pigtail curly ramps or the long zigzag ramps. 15 years later, the federal government discovered that people were not using the overpasses because instead of having to cross a 40-foot wide street, they were having to walk 150 feet around these pigtails and over and down. And what they discovered was that the percentage or the, the rate of accidents and personal injury at those intersections actually went up because children were still darting across the street, but automobile drivers were seeing this massive structure and no pedestrian crossing signs. And so they were driving like they didn't have to worry about kids, but kids were still coming out in the street. In fact, we did a study at 72nd and Blondo because the city recently removed that one. And we counted on three different occasions and each time we counted, we found that less than 10% were using the overpass of the total pedestrian volume that were crossing the street. So essentially, they aren't built anymore.
Okay. I guess the, the one by St. Margaret Mary and UNO is a rare one because that one is being used.
And there are some that are being used. The one on 132nd and West Center, where my son goes to middle school, is used extensively. Hundreds of students per day use it. I'm not saying that they aren't used where they, where they are located, but for the most part, they're not being constructed anymore for the reasons that I stated above.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
No further lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. Item number 46, Resilience and Tasked Prospect Village Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan, prepared by the Omaha City Planning Department. Being here by as approved as a development plan for the redevelopment area bounded by 30th Street on the east from Hamilton to Park, Parker Street and 33rd Street from Parker to Lake Streets, 36th Street from, on the west, Hamilton Street on the south and Parker Street on the north from 30th to 33rd Street and Lake from 33rd to 36th Street.
Sir, go ahead and put it on. Public hearing on item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jim Anderson, City of Omaha Planning Department, 1819 Farnham Street. The Prospect Village area is an L-shaped neighborhood in North Omaha between Lake Street and Hamilton and 30th and 36th Street. It excludes the northeast quadrant of that area. There's a large amount of vacant land in it and this plan proposes to address that by constructing 80 new single-family houses. Half of those houses, 40, will be for homeownership and the other 40 will be for program designed for rent-to-own purposes. The exceptional thing about this project is the fact that redevelopment began two years ago with the construction and the completion now of 21 houses by the ABC Group of Coalition of Nonprofit Housing Developers. I believe a member of that group is, is here today. And secondly, it's the first redevelopment plan, which is following the approval of the North Omaha Village Revitalization Plan. And that plan was led by the Empowerment Zone and they also assisted in the development of this plan. Are there questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Lee Aylers. I'm at 5202 Cass Street. I'm not sure that I should be up here as an opponent because I support this project. I think it's a great project, but I believe there's a small detail in the ordinance that allows the city to use eminent domain to acquire property from individuals that may not be interested in selling. And maybe that's been removed since the planning board passed this a few weeks ago. But I don't think that eminent domain was established to have property taken away from one individual and then transferred to another individual. It seems to me that when I learned about eminent domain, it was for the construction of roads or schools or, or public projects. I think the right of individual property ownership is fundamental to this country and to our community. And for any government entity to force a person to sell their property to the, to that public entity and then that entity transfer it to an individual is wrong. So again, I support this project, that provision of it. I would urge you to withdraw that, that portion. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Cunningham, the, Mr. Aylers stated in regards to the eminent domain, that is a, over the years that I've learned, is a standard component of projects like this. And it is absolutely the last thing something that would occur if a project like this was being detained, stalled or whatever the word might be, but that's absolutely the last thing that would happen. Is that correct?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Director, City of Omaha. Yes.
I see no further lights. Do we have a motion? Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, if agenda item number 47 through 48 should be laid over for three weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, a public hearing on agenda items number 49 through 53 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading. Item 54, ordinance to approve the execution of performance contracting agreement with Siemens Industry for the implementation of the energy conservation measures on city
Public hearing on item number 54 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next time.
Item 55, ordinance to transfer an undercover appropriation balance of the general fund reserve account in the 2011 budget of the city of Omaha to provide appropriations to the planning department, code enforcement and condemnation division.
Public hearing on item number 55 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 56 through 57 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 58 through 62 shall be held on the second reading.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. No lights, roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Public hearing.